All right. Time is 6:50 and we are back in regular session. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight and taking part in this board meeting. As we do each meeting, we'll begin with prayer and pledge to the United States and Texas flags. Tonight's prayer will be led by trustee Lowe and the pledge is by trustee Herrera.
Good evening. While we've come to you and I would like to thank you for all the blessings you give us as we pass through your company. And while we would like to thank you for bringing our staff back and our kids back after their rest. And while we would like to thank our people in armed services that give us liberty, have a free meal and all the things that go with it. If you're with us tonight and we did the business, everything we say can be part of our work. Would you say that?
And. I'm going to lead this. To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas side, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state under God, one indivisible.
All right. Thank you both very much. The next item on the agenda is recognitions, school board recognition month. And tonight we've got Vinnie Maddies and Angie Davis. They're going to recognize each of us.
All right. Good evening, board. This month is very special because it's school board recognition month. And tonight we have the opportunity to honor you through countless hours of our leadership and service to Waller ISD and B.
So this year's 10th theme is "Ford Together," and we think it's very exciting for everyone. In the past year, we completed construction and celebrated the opening of the new building, the renovation and opening of the new home and open day and more.
And in November, our voters approved bonds to continue building to serve the needs of our students, staff and the community.
So great things are happening here in Waller ISD, all thanks to your servant leadership, support and input. This month, school districts across the state of Texas are authoring their boards. And while we do believe all board members deserve recognition, we know that our board is the best.
You are the voice of the community and our schools. You quietly serve without the expectations of recognition. You listen to provide, you listen and provide feedback. And most importantly, you keep the mission of our, of caring for our kids while providing for, for their needs so that they can become successful in all our aspects and lives, at the forefront of everything that we do.
So tonight, on behalf of our leadership team, teachers, staff, students, parents and all of our community, we thank you for leading us through rapid growth and building rate.
We are blessed to have you as we move forward together. Thank you, board. Please join us in a round of applause for our outstanding.
All right. Thank you very much. Next item is public comments on agenda items, and there are none. It gets us down to item number six, the consent agenda. Board members, you had the consent agenda in the packet and we had a amended list today. So this would be the consent agenda as amended. And also you'll notice the secondary campus improvement plans are listed in the consent agenda. We received those last month, went over them thoroughly, but failed to approve those. So they're also in the consent agenda. At this time, if you've got questions on the consent agenda, it'd be a good time to ask. If there are no questions, I would consider a motion on item six, and that is the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
It's been moved by trustee Lowe and seconded by trustee Flukinger that we approve the consent agenda as amended. Any questions or comments before you vote? Please cast your votes. All votes in. Motion carries five, four, zero, against and zero abstain. Please. Gets us down to the regular agenda. Item seven A, approve and accept the financial, annual financial report for fiscal year ending August 31st, 2022. And we've got Audrey Enbridge with us tonight and looks like maybe a representative from Woodley Bend.
We go with a clicker, so we've got to pass it off. Well, good evening, members of the board and superintendent Moran. We are happy to present this year's audit. I'm actually happy it's over. And so we have really great news to share with you tonight as far as our financial stability that we have within the district and the progress that we are making forward together. So without turning it over to Lupe Garcia, he is with Woodley Bend and he is our partner on the audit.
Good evening, trustees, superintendent Moran. My pleasure to be here tonight to present to you the results of the fiscal year 2022 financial statement audit, federal single audit. I have a presentation that'll take you through the audit results, will go over some financial statements highlights and all of the required communications. In addition to myself, other key members of the engagement team, Eileen Colvin, Michael Lenzall, who's the senior manager, working with the district.
She was really busy reading the audit report, sorry.
She's looking at fund balance.
Working with the district through each phase of the audit, Lauren Romaldo is the senior associate leading the engagement team outside. Tom Peterson was the second part interview being quality control reviewer, has over four years of experience. So he reviewed this report, he updated the raw files, level of quality control. The audit process itself takes several months to complete. It started in the summer when we perform interim procedures on internal controls and compliance over plans or applicable innovative programs. For year end, your return after the fiscal year is over, we'll be performing procedures under financial statements, preparation of initial corporate information, confirming information to third parties, cooperating, balances and transactions in your fiscal year, general ledger and source documentation provided by the district, all with the goal of expressing an opinion on the financial statements. As external auditors, we can express a few different types of opinions. We are expressing, have expressed an unmodified opinion, which is the best of the financial state audit. So that's the first section right after the money in the section of the report where you can find our lean opinion on page three, on our front letterhead, signature. That's going to indicate if the users of financial statements want to say this report is what financial statements are fairly stated and all material effects and prepared course of generally accepted statements. The single audit section of the report is in the back until the beginning on page 93 is our second report on internal controls over financial reporting and compliance and materials in financial statements. We didn't identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control, which are your procedures, your processes that we have in place here at the district. Nor did we identify any material non-compliance of financial statements. And then the third and last report we issued on page 95, and that's in regards to your administration of your federal programs. Each year, you prepare a schedule of expenditures of federal awards that lists all the federal programs that you've expended during fiscal year. We go through that list and we identify which programs were tested as major programs for fiscal year 2022. That included your ESTR awards, emergency connectivity fund, and your special education clusters. We had three major programs tested in this single audit. Our procedures over the three major programs, no question cost and nonperformance. So good news here as well. Within 30 days, this report will be uploaded to the federal audit clearinghouse. It will be certified and submitted both by the district and us. And that's one of the ways the federal and state agencies become aware of how you perform in the audit. Jumping into your financial statements on page 15 is your statement in net position. This is your monthly based financial statement, your balance sheet as of the end of fiscal year, your total assets and deferred outflows of resources totaled 518.5 million of that amount. It's primarily comprised of your cash investments of 135.20 million and your capital assets, your land, buildings, vehicles, equipment, furniture, construction progress. That was 348.4 million. Your liabilities and your deferred outflows of resources totaled 515.5 million of that balance, that's primarily your outstanding long-term debt, your bonds payable, including non-terrified premiums of 404.7, 407.7 million. And then you participate in the teacher retirement system in Texas for both pension and retiree healthcare benefits for your employees. There's liabilities related to that participation. The district records its proportion share, the overall plan liability, your pension liability was $12 million. The OPEV liability, which is related to retiree healthcare, is $24.6 million. You have to record those liabilities in your financial statements to present financial statements in court of the gap. You're contributing to both of those plans, exactly like you're supposed to. These liabilities are remeasured each and every year by auditors and actuaries at TRS. You take the information that's provided to TRS to the district and you record it. So that represents the district's proportion, proportion of share of the overall plan liability. Getting to your fund based financial statements, the general fund is the main operating fund of the district. Total revenues were $87.4 million. Your revenue in the general fund is primarily coming from two sources, property taxes, 52% of your revenue and state aid is another 37% of your revenue. The remaining 11% comes from other state funding, which is primarily either TRS on behalf of payments that TRS makes directly, the state makes directly to TRS on behalf of district employees. We have federal funding of 4.1 million in the general fund and other local funding of 1.2 million, which included some insurance recovery. That's why that mounted this so high this year. Looking at expenditures, they totaled $77.7 million for fiscal year 2022. In the general fund, 62% are related to instruction, instructional related services, functions 11, 12, 13. Annual budget, 9% for facilities, maintenance and operations, 7% for instructional and school leadership, 6% for student transportation, and then each remaining function of expenditures was 4% or less. There's three budgetary schedules in your financial statements. The first one, the cover reviews your general fund. Your revenues are greater than final amended budgeted amounts by $300,000. Your expenditures were less than final amended amounts by $1.5 million. So favorable variances for both revenues and expenditures. Overall, your revenues did exceed your expenditures by $10.4 million. That means there was an increase in fund balance. Ending fund balance of either the year was 19.8 million. That gets broken down further into two categories, non-spendable fund balance related to employee and creep rate items, that was $400,000. And then unassigned fund balance, which is a portion of fund balance against everyone 's pension, that's what's available for spending, was 19.4 million. So that $19.4 million in fund balance represents 25% of general fund expenditures for 91 days. You can see that it's continued to improve. Last year, you're at 11.6%, the year before that was 5%. So it's been gounded quite remarkably, so good news for the district. I know Audrey's been on several rating calls with financial rating agencies and so they've been very happy to see how management is managing its resources and having been able to build that unassigned fund balance reserve backup.
Before we go on, out of that 10 million that we put into fund balance this year, 2 million of it was related to hold harmless. So you remember back in the fall of '21, the state came out and said, we're going to hold you harmless for the first four, six weeks. That generated an additional $2 million. And then $2.5 million was from ESER related, or COVID-related expenditures that we paid out of the general fund that were reimbursed by ESER. And so that's 4.5 million of the 10 million. And then part of it was related to growth and then the others were, of course, as Lupe said, insurance-related revenues. But overall, we're very pleased. And as far as our financial position, going into these bond, getting ready to sell bonds, the rating agencies have been very, very, very impressed and happy with the district's stability.
The second and third budgetary comparison schedules in the report harbor your child nutrition fund and your debt service fund. Child nutrition revenues were greater than budgeted amounts by 300,000, your expenditures were 4.9 million, were less than budgeted amounts by 100,000. Overall, you did have an increase in that fund of 1.3 million for an ending balance of 2.5. In your debt service fund, this is where the interest and same proportion of your tax rate is reported for the repayment of principal and interest on your bonds. Revenues of 22.8 million were greater than budgeted revenues by $40,000. Your expenditures were less than budgeted expenditures by 2.2. Overall, we had an increase in fund balances at service fund for an ending fund balance of 21.8.
Which was planned.
Which was planned, yes. I think the budget was actually $4 million, an increased fund balance by less than the budgeted. Your significant accounting policies are following all current GAAP. The district did implement a new accounting pronouncement related to how leases are accounted for and recorded in your financial statements so that took effect in fiscal year 2022. Fiscal year 2023, there'll be a similar implementation related to all your IT arrangements and contracts related to software licenses and software subscriptions. So that will have to be undertaken and implemented next year's report, so.
He's smiling.
That's going to be a big project.
Great, great.
The financial statements do include estimates. There's not an invoice or a bank statement for every amount that the district reports in the financial statements. So it's important for you to realize that anything related to state funding and state aid, there's a lot of variables that go into that and recording the revenue and any related to pools. Any allowances for uncollected or receivables is based on historical collections. And then anything related to the pension and other points of employment benefit, retiree healthcare, retiree pension, that's the largest asset in the financial statement by far. We talked about that earlier. So it's just important for you to realize there are some financial statements, things that change in the future, but management is reviewing those estimates appropriately and following all current GAAP. No difficulties in performing and completing the audit. We had the district's full cooperation through each phase of the audit. We request several pieces of information. We select samples, we get to interview individuals during the year, and everyone that we needed to meet with, we made available information was provided to us. Questions were answered in order for us to hear presenting the report due on time so the district can call us if conditions. We didn't identify any material statements, so we had to bring the management that, hey, you have to post this in order to correct your general ledger to have correct financial statements. So good news there. No disagreements with management on any matters. We do have a management representation letter at the end of the audit. That's simply management, superintendent, CFO saying, we've provided all the information you requested. We're not withholding anything that we know of that would mistake these financial statements either from the DGA that you reported or disclosed. We aren't aware of the district consulting with any other accounting or auditors on any matters. And in the last bullet on this slide, during the year, we may answer questions, provide information and provide guidance for the district in any accounting or financial related areas, but at no time do we feel the way we answer the position to take on any matters and condition as to our retention as the district sticks for all auditors. So that completes my presentation on the audit process, audit results, the financial statement highlights and our required communications. If you have any questions about any of that or anything in this report, you have to take those questions at this time.
I don't really have any questions. I do have a comment, and that is, you know, we really focused on the fund balance and especially with this being an election year, they'll put a barn election and sell that barn. So the rebound of the fund balance is, is ready. Work well done, for sure.
I want to credit, on behalf of the district and the team, I want to credit Audrey and her little bit of work. And Audrey will say this, I think it's nice to let it in charge. You were known to a lot of procedural changes that everybody had to deal with, but it was everybody in this room, the principals, the cabinet, directors, everyone. Shout out to our stadium federal programs person did an unbelievable job this year in working with Audrey and Angie Quaido and Kelly Baron on the ESTR funds, Rosa on the operation connectivity and her team, and then the principals and the school administration team of Angie and Vinnie, working to identify areas that they could, they could make cuts or make things and not impact anything. And that was a tremendous lift for everybody coming out COVID. And I think, I don't know this, but superintendent stock, I think as this district was out of COVID and really this is the year where everything plays in from last year, we're out of it. Some districts are now hitting the fiscal cliff. We are not, we are now right back where we should be after that horrendous three years of that ordeal. And a credit to you and thank you to your team. Your team was wonderful to have here. They were the most polite team I've ever seen in my life. I felt bad a lot of days, you know, because it's.
We're shifting on moving them all around.
Yeah, we're moving them all over the place because we need this room for this or we need this room for this, so thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I want to share my congratulations as well, and the entire team. I mean, we've done so many people involved. Having done audits in my industry and having been receiving and audits from the regulating regulatory agencies, you know, they never, I want to make sure everybody knows, they never say good job. You know, they're not supposed to say good job, you know, but the words, I want to say them again, no findings, no non-compliances, no deficiencies, those should be the sweetest words that anybody in this frame has ever heard. So congratulations and you have four professionals that were paid to find us. So the fact that you're that clean is phenomenal. So and thank you for with you too as well and your team of professionals that came and did this.
Anyone else? So we appreciate it. Thanks for coming out. We will need to accept this financial audit. So board members, I need a motion on item 7A to accept the annual financial report for fiscal year ending August 31st, 2022.
Make a motion to accept the annual financial report for fiscal year ending August 31st, 2022.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Lauren and seconded by trustee Herrera that we accept the annual financial report for fiscal year ending August 31st, 2022. Any questions or comments before you vote? Please cast your votes. All votes in. The motion carries five, four, zero, against and zero abstain. Thank you. The next item, 7B, Waller High School JROTC out-of-state travel request. Vinnie?
Good evening, board members. President Kaminsky, superintendent Moran. I'm here once again for our state travel for our JROTC. We have three Waller High School students that are JROTC students having advanced to the JROTC National Drill Team Championship in Daytona Beach, Florida. The team consists of 13 found unarmed drill, 13 warhawk armed drill and four open color armed. Travelling of 13 male students and three chaperones, 17 female students and two chaperones. They plan to travel by charter bus and are scheduled to depart on Thursday, May 4th, 2023 at 5:00 PM and return on Tuesday, May 9th, 2023 at 2:00 PM. They will be staying three nights at the KLT Daytona Beach Oceanfront Resort. This is my recognition that the Waller Independent School District Board of Trustees accept the Waller High School JROTC Drill Team Request for Out-of-State Travel to the JROTC National Drill Team Champion, Championship in Daytona Beach, Florida. Attached is a copy of the Waller ISD board policy on out-of-state travel, FNG local, an overnight out-of-state travel form and general information for you.
Are they driving all night on charter buses? Do you just drive a check to the back? Have you all selected the charter yet or gotten prices?
That I don't know, do you?
I'm sure they have.
I'm just sure, yeah, but she'll make sure it's a reputable company.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. I want to commend this pack to, you know, there's a lot of gear that we look at. We're approving our kids going out of state, so there's a lot of good information here. Got the floor, wish them best of luck.
I'm sure I'll be back again and be joining somewhere else.
They've been using the same charter company also for at least the last five years.
The dads do have to go up and try. Like. I had a question.
Oh, no, 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 no.
I was going to say, oh. We started doing that.
They do fun, they fun raise for the trip. I'm sorry. Why would you want to give money to that to get the bill?
TC, you can donate.
Yes, you can.
While you do, see Ms. Fletcher, she'll put you in touch on how to make that donation to the RDC to make sure it gets in the right activity fund for that group. Any other questions?
If you do that, you're just going to go to generous, you don't want to go to sympathy to the money.
Yes, we can talk to Mr. Engle and Master Park.
Just got to do it okay by the boss.
You let me now, I'll help you the rest of the way.
The district would be happy to borrow your credit card for that trip.
I don't know what the limit is, so no one gets embarrassed.
We'll be back next month and surprisingly, you're out there flying this year. First class. First class.
The day is going to. Down the bus when they fly.
When they fly first class. Any other questions? Not, I would entertain a motion on item 7B, and that would be the Waller High School JROTC out-of-state travel.
I'll make the motion that we approve the Waller High School JROTC out-of-state travel request for the JROTC National Drill Team Champion, May 4th through 9th, 2023, 2023 as presented by Vinnie.
It's been moved by trustee Herrera and seconded by trustee Lowe that we approve the Waller High School JROTC out-of-state travel request to the National Drill Team Championship on May 4th through the 9th, 2023 as presented. Any other questions or comments before you vote? Please cast your votes. All votes in. Motion carries five, four, zero and zero. And wish them the best.
We're going to hear back.
We'll hear you. All right. Next item, 7C, considering approved construction manager contract for elementary schools six and seven.
Good evening, everybody. Tonight I have a contract with the manager services on the two elementary schools coming up, six and seven. First, I would like to acknowledge the two projects that Robin Robinson is managing actual number six, Emily Delro and Meg David.
Elementary, excuse me. Elementary.
These are the first two projects come out of a 2022 bond. Prior to contact, if I allow you, but I put on time. The district's prepared a proposal for request, a request for proposal, we get that right, we're one step back in the number of the two times the bond came out. We have six firms turning in proposal, some supporting. The district reviewed and evaluated all six proposals based on criteria, included the RFPs. All six companies are well-qualified for these projects. Third tech proposal was ranked a highest and scored the best value of all. Third tech is unqualified, professional contractor and CMAR work in the heat period. Overdone, a proxy, which is considered a word is a good pick. I'd also like to recognize David Rose, he's an audio. I'd also like to recognize David Rose. He's an audio producer. He's Duratec. He's the president, CEO, and the office will be the principal in charge of this project. The addition of back there is Melissa Flame. We'll be okay. She's in the process of completing the construction documents. They're scheduled to go out and get a G M P. We'll be bringing that back if possible. Construction house approval in more than a year.
That was six. Does Duratec still do? Well, the main reason.
The cost scoring formula in the R F P was a heavy factor in that. It did also present the high of the, one of the best project teams. A lot of the other evaluation processes were nearly equal across the board from many of the proposals. College was the primary one to get a good score.
You ever done that before?
I have not. I've been, I'm familiar with the firm, but I've done work in the district.
I won't be done. I can't read it.
Okay. Are you specifically? Okay.
So I did, I had a couple of questions, Scott. So we're very familiar, obviously, with Drumala and Stewart Builders. Both have done quality work in the district. And when I took the total cost, the total C M cost. And compared Duratec with Drumala and Stewart Builders. I find Stewart Builders about three hundred eighty eight thousand dollars more and Drumala about seven hundred and seven thousand more than Duratec. And so knowing the quality of work that we've had before. Tell me about how confident you are in the, in the proposed, the proposal that Duratec be your contractor. At what would seem, I mean, three hundred eighty thousand dollars is a lot of money, but in this bond for these two elementaries, it's less than half a percent.
Agreed. Like I said, it came down to the cost was a major factor on the way the R F P was written. But also they presented a quality team that had a lot more experience than some of the proposals. They're comfortable making that selection.
Is the gentleman here?
David Ro. You're welcome. Come on up.
Come on up. Be glad to. You may not have direct experience with us, but we have a legacy of work we've done in the Houston surrounding areas of school. Please feel free to reach out to our references. There are several districts. We take a lot of pride in our work. I can assure you, we deliver a high quality project with the school district and we'll meet or exceed your expectations on this project. We take it very seriously and we consider it a great honor at the services school district here. So answer any questions.
I know different districts handle things a little different way. We try not to be intrusive in the construction process. But there's quite a few of us that like to, like to lose the site from time to time.
Lock the gates.
Should get you a hard head.
We have our own. And they're great. So they designate owner or indoor visitor. And we do adhere to all the protocols, but that's one luxury we've had in the past with different companies. As being able to win sites and we have quite a, quite a ton of construction experience. Sitting up here on this board and they've been a great partner in this, in helping us through this process. And we saw some of the people you have on your team, and I think they'll, they'll be comfortable and usually stand in the way. We, we, we don't like grand tours. We don't, you know, we're not going to drop you and say, hey, drop everything. Here we come. It's more of just, it's five o'clock and got off work and going to take a look. And I just wanted, I wanted to be upfront with you on that one.
I have a problem.
You heard it here first.
Kevin took the words out of my mouth. We definitely do enjoy being involved. It's, it's fun to us. It's fun to see the district grow. And we take that very serious on how respectful we are, the type of buildings that we build and we put for, for our kids. We really enjoy working with a good team. We, we consider these relationships partnerships. We've done so good, we've done good so far and we hope to continue that as well.
Well, it's extremely important that you have the collaborative environment, partnership and everybody working together to accommodate and go over. And obviously that's going to be your taxpayers and the community. So, you know, when we look at the project, we're looking at it as a talent carry to deliver a project. It's a huge, a lot of, a lot of money. We want to make sure you get it right. We only got one shot to do it right.
Well, it says a lot that our guys are willing to go with you, with your firm. Because of the success that we have had with two of the others that were the, the number two and number three. In my view, not a lot of cost difference, but. We look forward to working with you.
One of the things I'll share with superintendent, you can share with y'all, is I'll share some project history that's recently done. To show the complex work they've done and how successful they've been with that. To use the new work they're doing.
I looked on their website. Yeah, I saw the stuff. I think Sheldon, I think he did some.
With the Sheldon High School.
Something in Clarence.
Finished up Fort Ben High School, wrapping that up. Tom Rome Bryant X High School. All kinds of different type of projects, stadiums, Katie's Football Stadium. Plant Ford Stadium. We're going to do all of these stadiums.
Looking at another one, it's a three or four phase project down at Spring Grange Memorial.
Yeah, that was a challenge.
Well, everybody I've talked to says they're working for it. They can do well.
Hard to do when kids are in the building.
That's definitely the most challenging separation between green buildings and brown buildings.
Yeah, I think I'm also second what Mr. Kaminsky was talking about the difference in, in cost. I mean, we, we admit it's best value. We admit cost is a factor. We add that to us, right? And if it's only three hundred thousand dollar difference and, you know, a couple of, a couple of our, your competitors, right? It doesn't take long to build up three hundred thousand dollars worth of changeovers, you know? And that's the other thing we are blessed with, yeah, easily. The thing we've been blessed with historically is we, our, our partners have made a commitment back to the teamwork. Do everything in our power to, to work things out for ourselves. Credit to be okay to, you know, they stay out in front of it. They, they do a really good job helping us mitigate not having to go there, right? But it's, you're right, one, one changeover could get us, could make it neck and neck again. So we're just hoping we can, we can all work together as a team to stay out of that.
And that's one reason why Brandon, just to you as a construction manager and a general contractor, what Clark did. It allows us to work as a team, work through issues like that early on and well during the project. Make those adjustments as soon as we use any positive active project.
And that is seeing the risk. If ninety percent of our work is in that delivery system. So we understand our role and his responsibility to help the primary contractor. We get out in front to protect your interests and make sure all this is thought out to get it done. We don't have surprise.
Thank you.
We are excited.
Anybody else have questions? If not, I would entertain a motion on item seven C.
I make a motion for item C, consider an approved construction manager contract for elementary schools six and seven as presented.
It's been moved by trustee Flueckinger and second by trustee Warren. That we approve the construction manager contract for elementaries six and seven as presented in the board packet, which would be for Duratec. Any questions or comments before you vote? Please cast your votes. All votes in. Motion carries five, four, zero and zero. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I look forward to working with you. Construction updates, Scott.
Stay here. Uh, this is a quick update. It's actually going to include a little bit from the twenty two bond. This is primarily with the project we have for twenty twenty two bond. Real quickly, we talked about the Waller Junior High was still working on its two D phase right here behind us. It's on schedule, opening this summer. Everything, it will move into the next phase. Schultz Junior High will continue to work phases on that. What, what was included, didn't have an innovation scope. Plan to go back in the future. Phase three is progressing. It's really just kind of fish up. It's a lot of tank before over in the fine arts area. The biggest thing is hanging out there. I'll get that. Alton Project, we got moved in. We still have minor work still going on there and some, a couple of lagging things are going to come in later on. Talked about the G M P coming back to it in March after now we got the C M on board. And we'll plan, start planning for the main transportation support facility over there in the A bar. Putting together a tiny team on that for sure. Waller Junior High in front, the new front entry would be existing up, trying to be right. This is the second gym that was innovated. The old base camp has become the primary gym. Here's the lobby coming in and the restroom is in the back area. You can see a lot of fringes and reefer starting getting closed. Upstairs classroom, look, they're coming along. You see ceiling grids in, finished tanks going on. So look, they're coming along real quickly upstairs. Here's the way running downstairs again. You see block bill in the C M U. The walls are starting to get cracked. They're getting to the thirty four, clean it up and out of the building. Again, some more pictures, the wood type of races stairs and wood to side with the, the clear storage are. Cafeteria, which looks like a good place to store material in now. Serving lines are off to your left. Off to the right is the library. It's hard to see, but it's that little oval shape. L G I is part of the. There it is right there. It's part of the, part of the library. Mentioned the block bill. The M V P up in primarily finished on the second floor and could be tracking up on the first floor. Permanent platform was scheduled to come in February. I'll actually be bringing back the five season, but approximately November. A little bit of language change and also bring back to get approved. Sunken plants still maybe push it out, maybe have till April. As you come by, you'll see all the, you'll be building up. Really just wrapping up on the back north side. I'm doing the east gym, that section of gym I was telling you about. Extra wall panels on the site. They should be going up this month. Sheep rug, I mentioned the paint in progress. Love the stuff that keeps going so quick. I keep it updated. Ceiling grid scheduled to be down on the second floor. As you saw, it's already on the photograph that it took this week. And I mentioned the third phase demo to start this summer after we move in the two story condition over at Schultz. Here's the front entry. What's up? You can't be funded for this one. It's been ordered and it'll be here late spring and the summer, probably pushing December. So. We minimize the impact of the end. It's new flooring and what is the training room. Of course, the final flooring has gone down in all the band wire area, all corridors and choir areas that happened over winter break. We finished out some more administrative suites over the fall and in the winter break. With the collaboration area over in one hundred hall that matches the one over in two hundred hall. That'll be primarily finished this weekend when they look at the confidence in this area. L G I, which was originally two art classrooms, is nearly finished. That'd be complete probably by the end of the month. So a few things are waiting there. Gibson's highlight colors we added along the corridors and one hundred hall primarily. As I mentioned, phase one, two A, two B are completed. Still working on phase three. There's still some places where it's going on. Mention fire sprinkler system in area five with that left here being. I should mention, there's also another system six over there that is complete and plenty of these tested. So we can get that on, online. We also, over the winter break, they were able to refinish the floor and the dance studio. The installation of gym floor, the number, the second gym that built in the heat event. That's scheduled for this spring. We'll time it, work around some labor repairs and some other things we gotta do and coordinate that. Probably some of these leaders have some real issues that they don't want those to be carrying on. I did for it. As I mentioned, some of the exterior canopies or the new electronic marketing. One thing I did put on here, we got the four new air cool shelters that support the two hundred leaning and fine art leaning. Those will be shipped in here mid February. So we'll be working in times to switch those out on weekends and spring break or whatnot as allowed. As long as the school isn't out that big, it'll swap one at a time. There's two for each area. Going over to Holden. And they are completely first today. Here you are coming up from the main front entry in the main center hall. Reception op to your left. Pitch is turned out when we enter. Here's a reception area off to the left. It's coming in from the main entry. It's still got some detail to finish up. We had a security glass over the reception counter next to that. Here's a new collaboration area. Some of what we've done on the campus. Here's a key to the spot within the library area. Here's the library proper. Shopping furniture has been ordered. It should be here by the end of the month. Over the wood, certain boxes and that. Here's a great picture of you walking through the cafeteria. Thank you, Benny. You can see the tanks been refreshed up and there's kind of tongue down one bit while they're down there. Here's a teacher's lounge. Again, it's, it's connected to an L G I off to the far end down there. Consider kitchen head over here as a search for that. Here's that water area. I'd like to mention that used to be the choir. Fire sprinkler alarms, places all passed, second January fourth, but since we're already achieved our temporary, we cannot concede until we get on the outstanding items complete. Safety and security measure is we got new doors coming in. We remodeled the area in February. Let's hunt for our key is scheduled for the summer as well. Rigs are generated. One of the things on long, long, indeed, I haven't heard it following the table fight team to do. I don't know. It's hard to get a stronger commitment on those and, no, we're starting to actually look at additional innovation scale. At twenty twenty two bond. We have on the comeback. It's been a reserve one we've already done. Here's a few of the projects. Now that we got some additional staff on the hand, we'll start trying to take these off in the plane eighteen month to, to the technology facility. Here we are. Details on the six and seven elementary. It's like with construction manager, I mentioned with the bringing in G M P in March. And the parking timeline is completion in August twenty fourth, which is early August. We're talking about this. Bring your own. The time of the album that I mentioned is getting ready to begin on the transportation needs here and the access. Just refresh you if you have not seen it, it's very moving. There's the modified plan from Jones that we're using for the elementary six and seven plan. And then we've added four classrooms to that plan to allow for the full day, ten years and some of the hurricane programs. There are slight modifications at lining of hall here. Some of the spaces are just reconfigured, reprogrammed and moved there, but the overall shape of the building hasn't changed other than that addition. Here's the site plan. Here's the high school, uh, speed elementary six plan over in the, in Elrod. And the one out in Britain number seven. And that, I don't think it's, I'm sure the question is now. Right, that opening meeting, you?
If I'm not mistaken, team marketing at Ole High School sits down. Living in prosperity.
Yes.
Got that? Put that up.
Base monitor probably.
Okay, I think the far end of the paper construction.
Great Scott, your question.
Typically, that'd be a donation for, it wouldn't be full, full value yet. Cause I do know they, they replaced the display panel in that monument. You have the dressing monument, the new display that's not giving you a display. Even though that one was broken as well. Non-functional.
It's like the school would broke. What I did.
Those little displays just don't have the shelf life.
Just a quick comment. The congratulations on the transformation of Schultz to Holden. We walked it, we watched it and to go. I mean, we walked it, we watched it, and to go through it now is just, the transformation is phenomenal. And I haven't heard directly from the teachers or students in that building, but I'm assuming they're going to be really happy. I'll be talking, I'll be talking about some, but just a really nice, from the design, Melissa, through the construction, through the whole thing. It's just, it's really a neat transformation, phenomenal job, and on schedule.
Oh, I, I would add to that, the staff was super supportive as far as the move in, took a lot of their work too, to get that ready, and they were good to go for a state of school.
I'll tell you that the advantage we had with, if there wasn't advantage, with Alton is that we had four months to do the work. And there's, there's still things to go, there's stuff in the twenty-two bond for them as, as we move forward. But with Schultz, we had to do a lot of that work while they were in the building, and are doing it, and they have projects coming forward in the twenty-two bond as well. So anytime you're working with, that's why I said, working with students in a building is, is one of the most challenging things. Had to do it when I was in Fort Ben, and we're happy to do it here. And it just takes, we had two and a half months on a building, three times the size of the old Alton. With Schultz and, and your, your staff were just phenomenal, matter of fact, they, they were great, just remember that, David, just remember what I'm saying. And, and also, Michelle Steva and her staff were, were type of assistants moving as well.
My questions for the rest of the board, does anyone else notice Scott's demeanor after he gets a few successful projects? Are you feeling more jokes?
He starts fishing for more high schools, I don't understand.
Only the P.
My second P, I can't tell you, I've spoke to teachers and students, I've got a student there, you know? It's funny, I had to find the text that, you know, my wife had sent. I don't know if I have the permission from my boss to read this, but I'll read part of it anyway. He said one thing the teachers kept instilling on him is the shape that Alton was in, and how some of the students treated Alton, and so it's really important they take care of the new building, which stuck with them, so. It's fun to hear they, they're proud of it, you know, the staff, the teachers, everybody's proud of it. And I'm proud to walk into it, you know, there was, there was some, you know, curiosity or wonder, you know, if we're going to get this school ready, is it just a couple of fresh coats of paint, clean stuff up, move stuff around? It, it's a transformation of a, of a, of a new building almost, and it's, I know there's still, will be the challenges, that all the moving in and still, I mean, a building that's been around a while, but it feels like the brand they plays, so. Teachers are, and from a security point of view, some of the teachers, they said they feel like they're in a bunker, but that's in a good way, right? With all the stuff on the schools and the walls that were in Alton. No, I'm sorry, director of safety and security, right, probably had her sweating too, but it's a, it's, it's a bunker, it's good.
I appreciate that, it's very important to finish this project, finish projects.
Thank you for everything.
I guess not.
Thank you, Scott, I appreciate it.
Item nine, public comments on non-agenda items, there are nine future board items. February is the annual report. Also, the House of Go three, school board goals update, and T E A waiver for class size. And these were growing. Alright, Ken, what do you think?
Um, everyone out there, you know, Christmas break this year was a little different than, than most years, we had the week after. Uh, well, for some of it, but for others it was. So we're back, and Monday, we, we, we have a holiday, so it doesn't feel like we need one yet, I like to push that down a little bit, but some people in the audience would disagree with that statement. Uh, but Houston food bank distribution at the stadium on the eighteenth. And of course, big night, Stephanie, all our high school winner graduation, how many do, we have an estimate?
We were going to ask you that, we just have six more qualified this week because of scores that came in.
Okay, good.
So we're over ten.
Well, great. And then, of course, you know, we, we come back and we do the food bank pretty regularly. And then I will also throw a plug out there for counselor appreciation week, and I have nothing to do than how much I like counselors, Mr. Flukinger. But I think that they're underestimated and underappreciated in our.
I've never heard you say that before.
I hear it, I hear it everybody.
And then February eighth is District Site Based Decision Making Committee.
I'd throw one more thank you out there, Ms. Fletcher, if you could pass along, thanks to the culinary department, they're continuing to fix us some fantastic meals. Thank you so much.
Hardy beef stew.
I tried to speak out there earlier today.
Alright, being no other business in front of the board. Get his Saturday morning board.